Something happens in their family and they don't think they can do the job. And so they withdraw. And even in the presidential election, the presidential primary 2020, we had a number of candidates on there that had already withdrawn on that ballot. So you know, once we go to print at the state level or at the county level, we've already tested the systems and the systems have already been programmed to be able to handle the names that are on the ballots at that point. And so it's, you know, it would be impossible for us to, where we are at this moment, even on Wednesday, before we had mailed the ballots, to go back and take those names off. Now, we, we do have mitigating things that we do. You know, first what we're going to do is we're going to make sure at every voter service employing center, at every spot where they can vote, we're going to have a paper there saying that Dwayne Nava has withdrawn as candidate. We're also going to do a press release with all the local press, put it on our Facebook page, our Twitter page and, and our website saying that Dwayne has withdrawn. And then we don't count Dwayne's votes. If there's a vote for Dwayne, it shows up as an under vote. So you can't, you know, his name will not be on the summary of votes at the end of the election. So I mean, that's basically what we can do at this point in the election for you guys to make sure that, you know, his votes aren't cast. Now, there's, like you said before, there's going to be a lot of people that vote for Dwayne. And those people are disenfranchised because the votes won't count. They'll be an under vote.
That it? Excuse me, that it? I'm sorry? You done?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. I will answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Ortiz, Councilor Winner?
So what percentage of the votes are mail-in votes? Because none of those mail-in votes are going to be notified. What percentage?
You know, it's hard to say, but usually in-person voting is around 3%.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No, we're just, Mr. Kadosik, do you have anything to add?
I had the pleasure of representing Mr. Ortiz when I was county attorney. And I just want to speak for his, his ethics and his ability. The city asked the county to conduct this election on our behalf. We have done that going back decades, frankly, because we don't have the ability to independently run a general municipal election. So we, we entered into a contract. We of course will, will pay for the county clerk services to run our election. But the designated election official is, is Mr. Ortiz. So just all decisions regarding this election are going to be made by the county clerk. I have reviewed the law and, and what Mr. Ortiz has said is accurate. That's exactly the way to handle it. So it's, you know, it's an unfortunate situation when a candidate withdraws, but the law says when that happens, this is how you handle it. And that is how this election will be handled.
Thank you. You made a point earlier that said that a withdrawal has to be submitted. Has a withdrawal been submitted?
I have not. There, there is a document that Mr. Nava should, should sign and I request that he sign. I have not seen that.
And the ramifications if it's not signed?
Well, then there's ambiguity as to whether he is withdrawn. Mr. Nava has a great reputation. He's, he's, he's been, you know, an upstanding citizen. He would have made a great city councillor. He's decided to work for the Pueblo Chamber. He's, if he says he's withdrawing, I'm sure he can come in to the city clerk's office and sign a withdrawal document. I haven't seen that. I don't think he's signed that yet.
Marissa?
I'll say when I spoke with Mr. Nava, I was not yet sure if he, there was a document that he needed to sign as the official withdrawal date was August 30th. And I wasn't sure that he would be able to officially withdraw. And so I told him that I would consult with the county clerk and recorder on if there was a document that he did need to sign. And he did indicate his willingness at the time to sign such a document.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Flores?
And is there, is there any reason why Dwayne could not withdraw? And isn't it his right to withdraw if he wants to?
Yeah, it's, it's his absolute right to withdraw. He can withdraw on election day. We, in our calendar, the city clerk's election calendar say, we, we have a date when we say, if you're going to withdraw, withdraw by this date so that your name will not go on the ballot. Unfortunately, in this case, the withdrawal has come after that date. So Mr. Nava's name is going to be on the ballot. But I'm sure when that day came, Mr. Nava did not know he was going to withdraw. He, he thought he would run in good faith. So circumstances changed. He's now decided no longer to be a candidate.
The other thing is that we do provide money to the chamber. But we, would you confirm that this body has no business interfering in their business? They have their own autonomy. They're a nonprofit organization. They make decisions that they, through their board. And could you reiterate what I've just said? And confirm that we, we have no ability under a city charter, any other authority, other than the money that we give them for tourism and the operation of the chamber? Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, the, the city's only role in connection with the Pueblo Chamber of Commerce is to make sure that they comply with their contracts. And they have. That's the end of it.
Right.
We, they're, they're a contractor. The city has hundreds of contractors. They have performed according to the contract. End of story. We can't tell them how to run their organization.
When it comes to, when it comes to any kind of policies that they have, it doesn't appear that, you know, I'm, when I came here, I'm wondering why we're meeting at all. Number one, we have no, no authority here, no, no ability to tell the chamber what they should do and they shouldn't do. And, and I, and it's just, somebody please explain to me, you know, why they think that this is some nefarious kind of approach on an election? When in fact, you now have three people that have a better chance of winning, that one is eliminated statistically. You know, there's, there's a guarantee that two of us now are going to be guaranteed a position. Whereas before, with one loser, now the odds are better, in my opinion.
That was my point, exactly. So Dan, I mean, I'm sure you're correct as far as Colorado law, but the only thing I could find under Colorado law with elections is with a death, it's described as what you described. But what I read was, once the ballots were printed and mailed, you could not withdraw.
No, that, that's, that's not accurate. That's not accurate. A person can withdraw on election day. They can say after election day, you know, I've been elected. I, I am the designated elected official. And I, I no longer want to assume office. Once they are sworn in, then they can resign. So the councillor-elect, even if he wins, can, can withdraw at that point.
So again, that's kind of my point. If, if this wasn't a strategy and Mr. Nava did win, he could resign and we could replace him. If he lost, who cares? We announce the new manager of the chamber. So that's why it really looks like strategy. So that's why it looks and smells very bad.
My, my brother Ray was the politician in the family. I'm just the lawyer. I, you know, these, this political strategy is, is just, just beyond my expertise.
I'm sure, I'm sure you're good friends with Wally Steely.
Oh, I have a, I, I, you know, I, I love Wally. But he's, he's, he's passed away. My brother's passed away. That's, that's all past tense. I don't, I had no role to play in any of this. Okay.
Mr. Ortiz?
I have the law pulled up if you would like to hear it. It's 1-4-1001. Withdrawal or disqualification from candidacy. Any person who has accepted a designation or nomination may withdraw from candidacy at any time by filing a letter of withdrawal. And that's, that's the Title I. So that's what, what we're running this election on. But there are also municipal laws in Title 31. And it's basically the same. Any person who has been nominated and who has accepted a nomination may cause his or her name to be withdrawn from such nomination at any time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think everybody understands that. You know, I don't think that the, that, that, how I understood when Councilor Winner called this meeting wasn't to change what the Chamber of Commerce did. It has, this has nothing to do with the Chamber of Commerce or, or Mr. Nava's appointment. As a matter of fact, I mean, congratulations to Mr. Nava on his appointment. That's, that's a, that's a wonderful position. And I don't blame him one bit for taking that, that position. But the bigger question, and what was, what I feel should be questioned is that the emails that I sent yesterday to yourself and to Mr. Kadosik is that it was my understanding, according to the municipal code, that the name had to be stricken from the ballot. So what became very apparent to me when, when you eloquently set back a, a response that was completely understandable and I agree with. But the fact is that with that name still on the ballot, you, you hit it right on the head. We're disenfranchising voters. So whether, whether Mr. Nava gets one vote or 10,000 votes, those 10,000 votes are null and void and not good. So we live in a society now where the whole movement has been to include voters and more people to vote. We want, we don't want to leave anybody out. Everybody needs to be a part of the process. This process, and, and something that we probably need to look at going forward, is flawed. Because under this scenario, on any election, somebody could say that I'm going to run, go up to the date when ballots are going to get mailed out and say, oh, I'm not going to run anymore. Now, we, we know that's not going to happen, but it could happen. Is it really fair to Councilor Flores and myself and to Ms. Graham that these people who will not be reached and will not know that Mr. Nava is not running? And they vote for Mr. Nava? They would have voted for one or two of the other three. Now they have no vote. And so what we've essentially done is eliminated their voice in government. And, and there has to be some kind of remedy for that other than just saying, you know what, we're going to post a note here or we're going to do this. I was talking to a guy yesterday and he says, well, why can't we just put an insert in every ballot that says that Mr. Nava's withdrawn? And he's not a, a candidate anymore. But you know, we don't, we didn't have that time because we have one day. And who's going to, who's going to stuff 70,000 ballots in California to, to put that in there? So to me, that was the concern. This truly is not about Mr. Nava. This is about our system and, and how, how we've disenfranchised voters with the system that, I guess it's the best system in the world. But it's, it's moments like this that make you think that this is not good. Because whatever the results are, if you have, I look back, the last time I ran for at-large and there were 8,000 under votes on that ballot. Because obviously some people don't read the directions and only vote for one when they can vote for two. Or they just wanted to vote for one. It will be very interesting to see what the under votes are in this election. But whatever those under votes are, could have absolutely swung the election in one person's, and even the person who comes in third. They could essentially have been second or first, had these people been, had they known. And it's just discouraging. It's discouraging. And, and when Councilor Winter talks about, you know, perception is everything. Perception is everything. Dropping out of a race, no matter who it is, the day before the ballots are to be mailed, it just doesn't feel right. It just doesn't feel good. It feels like something's very wrong, whether it is or it isn't. I'm just telling you about what somebody's perception is on that. So I mean, I think that's what the gist of the meeting is, is, is that we're truly disenfranch- and I love how you said that. We're disenfranchising Puebloans for having a voice in this election. Councilor Shilling?
Thank you. If you disagree with your lawyer, we didn't do anything. Dwayne Nava made the decision not to run. He made the decision on the time he would make that announcement not to run. We had nothing to do with it. And as far as us being able to do or Beau being able to do anything to do with this, because they said it does happen. I think it happened when I got on in 15. I don't think she bailed out until the very end. It was too late and we already paid for all the money for the election. So it's happened before. It happened. The only way you're going to change it is go to the state. We don't sit around here and bitch all night long. But the fact is, you're going to have to go to the state to do anything. Mr. Ortiz is nodding their head. And I would imagine the attorney is too. Okay, so you all can be here tonight, but we can't do anything about it. It's the way it is. And you may not like it, but Mr. Misty. Can you guys be polite? Thank you. I think Dwayne made his own decision. And I think if you want to be mad, be mad at him because he didn't decide earlier. And as far as, I'm wondering if originally it was suggested by your lawyer, if there was cohesion or misconduct, illegal activity going on between Nick and the chamber and, and Mr. from Dwayne? I didn't understand that part. I really don't want to go in there. But I, I don't understand accusing people of some kind of criminal activity. Or I know you have an agenda in this also. So maybe we got to balance it. But I think the big deal is, guys, we can't do anything about it. You got to go to the state. And that's the way it is. And you can boo me and say, you're real mean and you're wrong. But it's a fact. I mean, I'm short with red hair. It's a fact. I can bitch about it and think it's not right. It's a fact. So that's, that's your answer. All you people need to get ahold of all our state legislators and complain to them about it. But you know what? How do you, when somebody dies, they die the day before the election. What are you going to do? Anyway, you all got great ideas, I'm sure. And I, I think you need to pass them on to places much higher than this place is. Thank you.
Councilor Flores?
As I understand, somebody made the comment that the chamber's not involved in this. Why were they asked to be here if they're not involved? So they're here. I don't think Mr. Nava knew on Wednesday that he was going to be selected or the day that they interviewed all four candidates. By the way, it's four candidates, not three. And why, why would the chamber have any kind of ill intent? They just picked the date, as I understand, because they, they wanted to get through the chili festival. And so they picked a date. You know, so that was their date. It was not Nava's date. And so I'm, I'm just wondering what, why we're here, number one. And number two, why we're telling this independent autonomous nonprofit agency? And why we have them here if we're not talking about them? I'm just real frustrated about this because I don't see anything wrong with this. I don't understand. There's nothing nefarious. There's no conspiracy here. And it's just nothing, I've learned nothing from this meeting here. And I'm very, very frustrated that we're even here.
Well, I'm so sorry, Dennis, that you feel that way. But as I said when I started, my comments that we're here to shed light on the situation. And, okay, and, and that's all. That's all. This doesn't look good. It doesn't smell good. I don't think, I don't think it's all coincidence. And I don't think a lot of people do either.
Councilor Tencio?
Yeah. You have all the right, every single one of us has the right to call a special meeting anytime, for any reason. And the thing is though, Laurie, that you think there was a strategy and you believe that there was a strategy. There's no proof. Bring the proof that something nefarious was going on, that it actually happened. And then we can deal with it. Otherwise, like Mr. Flores said, there's no reason for us to be here because we, we can't prove anything. Prove it, I'll jump on that side in a second. Not a problem. Because I, I don't want any illegality going on anywhere in the city government or anyplace else, as far as I'm concerned. But there's nothing we can do. Like Mr. Shilling said, it's done. And it happens all the time. So as far as I'm concerned, we're done.
Yeah, I didn't expect anything to change tonight again. This was just merely shining a light and talking about it.
Actually, I'm the chairman, so I wouldn't ask her. Yeah, give me just a second here and I'll, I'll recognize you for sure. Once again, and I just want to make sure that everybody's on city council is clear, clear on this, is from my perspective, this has nothing to do with Mr. Nava or the Chamber of Commerce. What this has to do with is the disenfranchisement of voters. That's all this is about. Now, if the community wants to know how the, the reason Mr. Ortiz is here, the reason the city attorney is here, to answer the question. So the public who's interested in how this process works can get the information on how this all came about and why we're, where we're at today. Mr. Ortiz has done a wonderful job of explaining that. Mr. Kadosik has had a wonderful way of explaining that. So people understand how it could not be changed. It can't, Mr. Nava cannot come off of the ballot. There's no way under state law, city law, any law that that can happen. So it is what it is. My point when I made my statement was, is that if that's the, if that's the way it is, then something needs to change in the way that we do it. Because we're disenfranchising voters in this specific instance. So you're, we're not going to change it for this election. It's not going to happen. Nothing's going to change. Mr. Nava's going to be on the ballot. We're going to, people are going to vote and the two top vote getters are going to be on city council. That's the way that it's going to be. But moving forward as a body and as a city, with the city attorney, the, with, with the help of Mr. Ortiz and Ms. Mitchell, we ought to figure out if there's a better way or some way that we could do this to, to, to make it better. And as a group, approach the state and say, this is how we believe we can fix it here in Pueblo, Colorado. And I guess that's what I hope to get out of this meeting and, and, and to move forward. If, if we as councillors think that it's okay to disenfranchise voters and to allow their votes not to count, then we have a problem. We have a bigger problem than it's, it's, we just hit the gavel, let's go home. It's, it, we shouldn't talk about that. We should talk about that. Maybe this was, we need to carry this on to another meeting at another time. But it's something that definitely should be addressed as we move forward. And it should be clear to candidates that there's a deadline to withdraw. And should you not meet that deadline, you're not withdrawing. I don't know that that's the answer. I'm just saying that that's something we need to talk about.
You can't make somebody run if they don't want to run.
Well.
If somebody dies before the election, I guess we could fine them. But other than that, I mean, what are you going to do?
Now you're just making light of, of, of a disenfranchisement of voters.
You know, it's going to happen.
Yes, you are.
I'm just saying, it's going to happen.
I promise the chamber that you could come up and, and say your piece and we'll be done with this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Hello, who are you?
Press the mic?
Yeah, you're good. It's ready.
It's ready?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Louis Nazario. I'm the chamber chairman, Pueblo Chamber Chairman. So I wanted to talk about the situ- I, I think it's completely misunderstood. I mean, you're sitting here making a lot of accusations against the chamber. But I just want to walk you through the timeline. Because in no way, shape or form, and I really want to back, want to portray the chamber of doing something that we didn't do by the book. So when we, when Rod passed away, we decided that there was, there was talk about naming somebody from within. We decided as a board, an executive, and an executive committee, that we owed it to Pueblo and the chamber, since it's such a, a position of interest that we needed to do a national search. So the board did a national, national search, which hired a third-party consultant to go through and provide us, we provided a job description, salary, anything that you would typically do. They did a national search. We had over 30 applicants and 10 of them actually met the job description to the, based on the professionals, met the job description the best. At this point, we established a selection committee that was not chamber board members. There was some chamber board members. There was a community people that were part of the selection committee. We had, we, we had applications and the applications went out. They were due on, on, on May 11th. At that point, we had 10 applicants that our selection committee screened. We screened them through a first interview process on, on August 4th. At that point, we were, our goal and our responsibility in our report back to the chamber board was to provide them with three candidates that the chambers of board would interview and we would make the decision together. We had the first interview, like I said, August 4th. At that point, there was a third-place tie. So we decided to bring four interviewers to the board. We notified the applicants on 9/15 of the second interview. But at that point, at that point in the, in the September meeting, we decided that the staff is so burdened with the chili fest, we were going to wait till after the Carl State Fair and after the chili fest to even conduct interviews. And it, I wanted to do it the first two weeks of October because I needed to ratify it on our next meeting, November 20th. I'm sorry, October 20th. At that point, we, we getting 14, 15, 16 board members together. It just sent out a poll. That's the day it worked out. It was on the 6th. We had four interviewers come, four interviews, interviewees come in. We started by alphabetical order and there was a grading sheet. And we did it, we did everything by the book. At the end, we decided that interviews went from eight to 11. At, from 11 to 12, we discussed it. And we came across Dwayne as being the best candidate. So at, at no- So, at, at no point was, was Dwayne going assured to position by any means at all. It was all about, I believe it's almost, we, we, as a chamber, got a lot of criticism, because it took so long. But I didn't care if it took two years. I wanted to find the, the right person for the right job. And so, yes, it took longer than it should have. We probably, I mean, but we had a strong interim president. We had an organization that was running very well. We didn't, we felt that it didn't have to be done quickly. We felt like we needed to do everything in our power to find the best candidate, and it turned out with the, our board, made up of 16 people, and, and 14 of them voted for Dwayne. We didn't, there, there was nothing that we did that construed any ill-doing, and I don't, I don't understand. It's just a, it's just a victim of circumstances and timing. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have whatsoever.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Counsel Brown?
I just want to congratulate Dwayne.
Same here.
Make a good choice.
I mean, thank you. We feel we did too.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? Counsel Schilling?
Just a question. What positive came out of this?
I think what was positive is that some community members came into council chambers. We addressed an issue that they had, and they got their answers to what went on, how it happened, and it's transparent government at its best. Are you okay with that?
I'm great.
Any other, any other questions? Comments? We're adjourned.